All to order at 6:03. Any additions and corrections to the agenda? Okay. We don't currently have any public to address the board. The purpose of the meeting, of course, tonight is the trustee vacancy. So, real quick, before we jump in there. So, the way that it's set up is that each trustee is, well, not each candidate has a 10-minute slot that they are set aside for. The first one of these is, let's see, that is candidate.
Rocket.
Yep, Tricia Brockett. And she will be with us for a, her meeting, it's a quarter after six. In fact, I think I already see her in the waiting room there. And then I encouraged everyone to show up five minutes early to make sure that they were able to get in and then let them know that we would then move them from the waiting room when it was time. And.
Actually got her at 6:10 here, if not 6:15.
Do I?
Yeah.
So, do all of you have the questions that Eric sent us?
Yes.
Yes.
John, Cal, do you have the questions?
No, but.
They're on my iPad, yeah.
Well, I have a thought, rather than me doing all the talking, and it's just, I mean, it's so, I'm disconnected with Zoom. I divided up the questions, and I thought if we all asked a question, at least they'd hear voices and interactions. And so how do you feel about that?
That's, that's fine with me. Actually, I was going to suggest doing something like that. But what I wanted to know is, are we going to be able to ask all 16 of these questions?
I'm sorry, Janie, would you speak up?
Oh, I'm sorry.
This might be me, let me, okay, turn my speaker up, go ahead.
Oh, okay, are we going to be able to add, I, I think that's a great idea to, to break, you know, to share this amongst us. But are we going to ask all 16 questions? Is that our goal or?
We won't get through it in 10 minutes.
I didn't think so.
No.
I didn't think so, so.
Interesting, because I didn't even know it was double-sided, so that's how I felt about even 11 questions.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
If we need the additional time, there's a good amount of padding that's, that's built in. So they were told 10, there's 15 plus still an additional five minutes of padding that's built in. I think the questions are a great starter, and it's important to try and be consistent as possible with what is being asked by different trustees. But also, at the same time, I think within an interview that if you, you know, ask follow-up questions and things wander from necessarily a straight path every time, you know, I, I think there's advantage to that, too.
Okay.
Yeah, well, how do you feel about sharing the questioning?
Yeah, I think it's a good idea, Kathy.
All right, so would you like to pick a question, or should we just freelance and ask what you think?
Maybe you ought to go, maybe you ought to just go over the questions, let us hear them.
Okay, there's a lot, Cal. What's, what to six, actually, I don't like that question.
Don't you like?
Number one.
Personal or professional constraints on your time or service might you anticipate? I think that's a good one, once we explain meetings and so forth. What do you think your primary roles of a trust, the three primary roles of a trustee, advocate, ambassador, asker? In which of these do you think you want to be the most active? What led you to this vacancy, which I thought I would ask first? What professional background skills would you bring to the position as selected? What do you think about, what about you do you think will stand out versus the other candidates? So they don't know the other candidates.
They don't know the other candidates, so that's kind of a useless ask.
Have you ever served on a non-for-profit or community board in the past? What library services do you or your family make use of? Would you be comfortable acting as an ambassador for the library at such events as the Fourth of July, and then if you're in there, the Friends of the Library as well? Research shows that team diversity leads to better outcomes, more innovation, and exceptional performance. What kind of diversity will you bring to the library board? How do you believe a library can improve the patron experience? How do you suggest we free, increase frequency of patron visits? I don't know, run of the circumstances right now, I don't know that that's a good question.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure I'm crazy about that question either, especially now.
What other libraries do you frequent, and do you think our library is missing or lacking? What are we doing well that we should expand upon? What are the library's strengths that you believe we need to cultivate further?
So how many, what are we taking out?
So you started off, Kathy, with question number four, so.
Yes.
I've got four, five, six, seven, we're skipping eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, skipping 14, 15, and 16.
Okay.
Say that again.
I've got, I've got one, I'll, it's better to do the ones we eliminated. One, two, and three, we're going to eliminate. And then, and then eight, we're going to eliminate. And 14, we're going to eliminate. Which leaves us then with 11 questions. So we've got one and four, five and six, seven, nine, 10, 11, 12 and 13, do we want to take, take them in, in groups of two, Kathy? Sort of do four and five, then somebody do six and seven, then nine and 10, then 11 and 12, and then 13, and the last person do 13, 15, and 16.
Okay, so I'm, I will do six and seven, what led you interested in professional background skills?
Okay.
Who's doing four and five?
You can do four and five if you want, John, if you want to do that.
Sure.
Then we've got nine, 10 as the next two.
I can do those.
Okay, Janie does those, and then 11 and, 11 and 12, and then 13, 15, and 16. So, Cal, do you have a preference for any of those questions?
I'll do any two, but you have to tell me what they are, because I have the list in front of me.
Okay, so the number 10 is what library services do you or your family?
That's in mind, okay, it would be 11 and 12 for Cal, right?
Yeah, sorry, would you be comfortable acting as an ambassador for the library at events such as the Fourth of July Parade or Friends?
So acting as, would you be comfortable acting as an ambassador for the library? For instance, at the parade and the Friends of the Library.
Something like that.
Okay, and the other one?
And the research shows that team diversity leads to better outcomes, more innovation, and exceptional performance. What type of diversity will you bring to the library board?
Okay, what type of diversity?
Yeah.
Okay, we've got our candidate waiting, and we're now at 12 after six.
Okay, real quick, Janie, I, I talked to Eric earlier. I was going to ask him to do the minutes, I can see you sitting there diligently writing, and I'd rather you.
No, no, I, I'm just kicking, keeping track of who is doing what questions.
Okay.
So you're going to do the last ones, right, Kathy? Oh, no.
I'm going to do, I'm, I'm going to do the last ones, which is what do you believe the library can improve? What other libraries are frequent, and what are the strengths?
We're starting, we're starting with six and seven, is that right?
Starting with four and five, and then Kathy is going to do six and seven.
Okay, so Jan's going first?
John's going first, Kathy second, Janie third.
I think six and seven are a better opener than four and five.
I kind of do, too.
Yeah, that's, that's a good idea, so.
Okay, so I'll go, I'll go, and then John?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then?
Then it's going to be Janie, then it's going to be you, Cal, and then.
Okay, so I go after Janie, okay, yeah.
So, Bill, you're last?
My last, and I've, I've got the last three questions.
Okay, then if you, keeping track of time, if you want to skip that and just ask, or Eric, maybe we'll go back to you, and if you want, somebody should ask the candidate, do they have any questions?
Yes.
So we'll kind of punt on that one.
Okay, are we ready to roll?
Yeah, thank you for, thank you, Bill, thank you, everybody.
Hello, Tricia. Oh, you're, you've got your mute on.
Hello.
There you go.
Hello.
Good evening, Tricia.
Hi.
Hello. Thanks for having me, I had to switch from my son's school Zoom profile over to mine, so.
Well, thank you for doing so. Eric, did you want to introduce anything or?
Absolutely, we'll do quick introductions. So, Tricia Brockett, thank you for being here, and thank you for your interest in the library board and the vacant trustee positions. The interview tonight is with the five current members of the library board. I'll go and do quick introductions. Kathy Meyerhoff is the board president. Kathy is also on the Human Resources and Building and Grounds Committees. Cal Stroh, who is labeled on the screen as iPad, is the, the vice president. Cal is on the Building and Grounds as well as Intergovernmental Agreement Committee. So, most everybody's on at least two committees, they meet as needed every other month, probably if we had to average it out. Secretary is Janie Church. And Janie's also on Building and Grounds, and I believe you're on Human Resources as well, Janie. And then we have Bill Hayes, who is our treasurer for the library board.
Hi, Tricia.
And Bill is also on the, the Finance Committee and the Long Range Planning Committee. And then last, but certainly not least, we have trustee John Heinsleman. John is on the Long Range Planning Committee as well as a Human Resources Committee. So, we've got about 10 to 15 minutes worth of questions and discussion. I sent you some information earlier in the, the day, but the discussion this evening is really focused on determining, you know, how well each candidate would fit in with the trustees and what they would bring to the, what they would bring to the board if selected. So on that, I will hand things over to, and I lost track of who's going first.
I'm starting.
Yeah, the, take it away, Kathy.
Did we lose Janie, or is she just off the screen?
No, she's here.
Hi, Tricia, thank you very much for joining us tonight. And I am Kathy Meyerhoff, I'm actually president of the Library Board of Trustees. And Eric, I wanted to also point out is our director, executive director, and you were introduced to Cal Stroh, maybe Cal, you can wave. Cal is our vice president, Janie Jersh is our secretary, and Bill Hayes is our treasurer. And as Eric said, we all serve on various committees. I just wanted to explain that you may be familiar with our schedule, but we meet once a month, usually the third Tuesday of the month. It's all posted on our website. Our meetings take probably the average of about an hour and a half. We, until last March, what?
If we're lucky.
But no more than two hours, and that would be a really heavy meeting. We meet typically until last March, we met in the spruce room at the library, which is the lowest, lower level. Obviously, we've been doing Zoom since last March, so we're usually a little more present than we are tonight, but that's the best we can do. So, I just wanted to start out, what make you interested in this vacancy at the library?
Thanks, Kathy, thanks, everyone, for your introduction, and I'm a relatively new resident to Lake Bluff. But obviously, I've been using libraries the majority of my life since I was a child. So it's been an interest of mine for a long time, and now I have my own young children and exposing them to the library and the services that are offered. And I think now more than ever, when so many things are virtual, and we're kind of taking a step back and away from the community, it's a great time to lean in and try to find those creative solutions of how we can use services like the library in new and different ways. So I guess that's what's driving my energy behind the, the application, and, you know, just serving on a local municipal board, I think, is a good start for me personally, because like I mentioned, I do have a young family, I also work for the Department of Veterans Affairs full-time, so I have some experience as well with like different populations, veterans and, and age ranges that I think would be valuable to the board.
Okay, that's great, that was kind of leads into my next question, of what professional background and skills do you think that would lend helping you with this position on the board?
Sure, well, during your introductions, I noticed that you have committees on Human Resources. So that was my major, I received a bachelor of sciences from, in Human Resources Management and Marketing from the University of Colorado. So that was my area of study, and then when I graduated, I started with the Department of Veterans Affairs, and I've been there for 10 years. But I do more legal work for veterans' benefits compensation. But as part of my, my journey with VA, I've been exposed to different business lines, like veterans' employment opportunities and other compensation packages and pension, you know, just entitlements that they're eligible for and advocating for veterans. So I feel that, you know, obviously, our veterans are a big part of any community, and with us being so close to North Chicago, that that would be an area that we could better serve. So I, my skill set is more in legal work, but my training and education is in Human Resources, and I'm very much so interested in that, and I think that this would be kind of exciting to have that area to work in. And so, I guess, do you have any questions for me more specifically about?
Well, I'm going to let my colleagues, so get to know you as well, so thank you. And I also want to say thank you for your service at the Veterans Affairs Office, that's important work, I appreciate you doing that.
Oh, thank you.
John, I'm going to pass.
This is John, good to meet you.
Hi, John.
What personal or professional constraints on your time or service might you anticipate if you were to be on the board?
Well, you know, that.
Yeah.
I'm a full-time employee, and I am a mother of two young children who are foreign, too. And my husband also works, but we live pretty close to the library, and I'm, I'm pretty familiar with the Zoom technology or different virtual opportunities, so I can be pretty flexible, and I, I look forward to, you know, I, I, just from what I've viewed from the schedule so far from the library, it seems pretty accommodating for those of us who, you know, might work during the day or, or have young children during the day, so I don't see, anticipate much.
Okay. As you think about three primary roles with trustee, advocate, ambassador, and asker, in which of these three do you think you'd be most active?
You said advocate, I'm sorry, can you repeat it?
Advocate, ambassador, asker.
Well, I think initially I would be an asker, because I'm brand new. And I, I am very willing to learn and to gather a lot of insight from you all, and just learn what the challenges are, what the opportunities are, so, and what the community's needs are, too, especially because I'm a new resident. So I think first and foremost, you know, the first year or, you know, first couple of months, well, it's in the temporary status. I would be an asker, and then I would like to be an ambassador eventually. It would probably make the most sense for me to be an ambassador to communities that I'm familiar with, like other mothers and parents with young children or, or veterans. Or maybe those two overlap. But I, I'm willing to other areas that the library serves and needs to serve. I'm, I'm pretty open to, to service of, of anyone in the community. And then I think down the line, once you gain that sort of leadership and experience, that's when I would feel more comfortable being an advocate and really being a community leader and, and learning more of my neighbors here and my children's, you know, schoolmates and their parents, so.
Thanks, yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Right, I'm Janie, and nice to meet you. And I am wondering if you have ever served on a not-for-profit or any kind of local community boards before? Have you ever had that experience?
I have not served on a local community board before, this would be my first time. Where we lived previously in Michigan, my husband was a police reservist, so he volunteered and went to monthly meetings, and then he was called to like fire drills and things like that, obviously, that was his experience, but I learned a lot just from what he had to do as part of that role. And at the time, you know, my children were babies, so I, I really didn't have the, the time to commit. But before then, my charitable experience was with part of a yacht club back in Michigan, and we just, we started it when we were young, kind of for fun, but we ended up raising a lot of money for cystic fibrosis, scheduling like golf outings, doing different charitable work, like dropping off backpacks for children at the beginning of the school year. We would do holiday drives where we would raise money for food donations and Christmas presents and things of that nature, so my prior community service, I think, is relevant, even though I haven't had this sort of board experience. And then within my job, I've served on different leadership platforms. I was selected for a national leadership program with the Department of Veterans Affairs, one of 14 people in the Veterans Benefits Administration. So we traveled throughout the country, and we took on a project of how we could improve fiduciary services for veterans. And that actually did, that made actionable change for them in, in terms of getting them assistance with fiduciaries. So I guess that's some of my pertinent experience that I'd feel most relevant.
Does all sound very pertinent to me. Going in a slightly different direction, I, I understand you have moved here recently, so this might be a question that might be difficult for you to answer, but what library services do you and your family make use of now?
Yeah, well, you know, even though we're new residents, one of the things I was excited about was that you had the online new resident library card, and I took advantage of that, and that's all I've been using, actually, because we moved here in March. So we do the curbside pickup every week, it's kind of nice for us because it gets us out on a walk, and we go pick up our books, and my kids drop off the other ones, and, and that's kind of a highlight of our week, actually, so I really like, I really enjoy it. And I also downloaded the Hoopla app, so I, I downloaded eBooks. I haven't done anything really to advance with that, just because a lack of time mostly, but I think those two services are great, and I read that the library is also partnering with tutor.com, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so, so I was going to look into that more, because I think that's really cool that, you know, in light of all the virtual e-learning and things like that, how can the library be, you know, an assistant or sort of an advocate for, for those kids, so. That's all I've really done so far.
That's a lot in a couple of months.
So, to jump in real quick, we are in our last few minutes of time. So any final thoughts, questions? Before we wrap up?
From me or from the board?
Oh, I was asking the board first, and then I was going to ask if you had any questions.
Okay.
And so first, any other questions for Tricia? If not, then Tricia, what questions do you have for the library board?
Well, a lot, but I guess I'll start with what are your most immediate needs, both for the temporary vacancy, and then once it's filled, you know, like if the applicant were to be selected and stay on?
Eric, you want me to pick up on that, or you can interrupt if I, I'm neglectful. The, the position that we are filling, we actually have two positions that are vacant, so we were seeking, we're hoping that we'll find a couple of candidates that we could install in November to be active members of the board, and then you would be filling a term which is up in April. And we would hope that, you know, it's a good fit, and we would be encouraging you to run for that position in April, which is a, Eric, correct me if I'm wrong, it's either a two- or four-year position? Four years, okay. And the, I will tell you that the, the, the election process is not particularly complicated in, in terms of candidacy and, you know, campaigning or anything like that, but it is, it's kind of a quick requirement, because processing and paperwork is pretty much in the much, the month of December, that's, that's the call of Lake County, not, not us. But that's pretty much where we stand, we're, we're looking for a long-term relationship and certainly hoping that it's a fit for all of us.
So bottom line is, you know, were you offered one of the two spots, you would have to put your hat in the ring in, well, in December for the April election, so you kind of have to jump in real fast.
Which is, which is basically paperwork.
Yeah.
Okay.
For the most part.
Okay, I talked briefly with a, a woman named Jill Rosa, who works with Vote for Lake Bluff.
Yes.
And she informed me a little bit about that process, so I was going to go through this, you know, initial interview and see what the, the specifics were from you all, and, and so that, that all sounds in line with what I was planning on, so. I guess I was wondering, too, like in terms of, are there boards, or there, are there certain areas that you're looking to fill within like a niche part of, that is needed on the library?
We don't have a particular slot that we're looking for. You know, I think that you, I mean, you certainly are very well-rounded, your experience with the outreach is great, your experience with Human Resources, you're the mother of young children, so I mean, you're a library user. You seem very enthusiastic about library and the services, I think that, I think you, you know, fit right in, and you seem to be, you know, adaptable, you're new to the community, how long had you lived here?
Just since March. Yeah, so not even a year.
Interesting time for a, a new home in a new town.
No, I know.
I had to move in.
It's, it's 2020, we're all dealing with the, the, so, anything else we can ask, answer for you?
No, I just, I thank you all for your time and for meeting with me tonight and hearing my story, and I, I do have some ideas, and I'm excited about the potential of this role, and I look forward to hearing more as we progress. Thank you.
Tricia, one more question, have you ever been in the library?
No.
You'll be here in March, Kathy.
We need to have a virtual tour someday soon.
Yeah, I look in the windows, you know, but no.
Well, thanks so much, it's great meeting you, and good luck to you, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Have a nice night, thank you.
Have a good night. Okay, we've got our next contestant, Andy Martin, who's waiting in the waiting room. I don't want to keep him waiting too long. Any, any notes, any statements, real quick, before we jump onto our next applicant?
I know, I, I know Andy very, I, I know Andy well, so I'm, I'm not sure. I'll let, we'll keep this, the same format going, but.
Okay, I was just going to suggest, maybe since Cal and Bill didn't get to ask questions, but I can understand if you, Bill, you would not want to on this one, so.
Yeah, the, yeah, if you, if you wouldn't mind, that's probably a better thing, and just let, let the questions come from everybody else. And Eric, I mean, we, Cal had questions, I had questions on the last one, and, and obviously, you're, you're watching the time, so that's how we're going to sort of progress, we'll, we'll keep the same questions going.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Do we want to delete any questions so we can get to everybody, or were we comfortable with just sending?
You know, one of my questions is a little bit redundant from others anyway, I don't think it matters. I think that start with the same questions we always start with, because then at least we're comparing the same. we're comparing the same answers among the people.
Good point. Okay, great, great.
All right. Here we go.
This is Andy.
Andy, hello? I think he's still connecting.
Look, yeah, it's still connecting there, it seems like.
Ah, there we go. Can hear us now. Yeah, we can hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yes.
Sorry about that.
Right.
No problem.
I didn't have on.
So first off, thank you for applying for the open trustee vacancies.
Thank you.
So we've exchanged emails. I'm Eric Bailey. I'm the library director. Go through quick introductions with the trustees that are present this evening. There are currently five members of the library board, all of whom are with us. In addition to attending the regular meetings, although the trustees are on a couple of different committees, I'll run through those as we go. The time commitment on those, as far as the, the meetings, is about an hour and a half, one to two hours on the regular meetings, and then the other committee meetings happen as needed. So jumping in, we have, and I would be grateful if the trustees could wave when I call your name, is Kathy Meyerhoff, who is the board president. And Kathy is also on the Finance and Human Resources Committees. And then we also have Cal Stroh. Cal is the vice president of the board, and she's on the Building and Grounds and Intergovernmental Agreement Committees. And Kathy, I think I forgot to mention you're on the Building and Grounds as well.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then we have Janie Church, who takes amazing minutes for all the meetings as the secretary of the board. Janie is also a key player on Human Resources and the Building and Grounds Committee. And then we have our treasurer, Bill Hayes. And Bill is on the Finance and Intergovernment, not Intergovernmental, a Long Range Planning Committees.
Andy, how you doing?
I'm doing well.
And last but certainly not least, we have John Heinselman, who is a library trustee and is on the Long Range Planning and Human Resources Committees. So very quickly, we've got 10 to 15 minutes for discussion and interaction with all the candidates this evening. Each one set up is an interview, interview for a different time. And after having a chance to interview the candidates tonight, the board will then have a chance to discuss and would be looking to make a final selection at the November 17th regular library board meeting. So that's a bit about who's here, the process. And on that, I will turn things over to Kathy to get us started on the interview portion.
Hi, Andy. Thanks so much for joining us tonight. Nice to meet you.
Having me.
Um, quick question. What made you interested in this vacancy at the library?
I spend a lot of time at the library, reading and things like that. I just, I really haven't gotten much involved in, in these types of things in the past, and it just felt like a good fit for me. Because I'm a very passionate reader and, and, you know, I think that, I really think that the library is a, is a great community gathering place, and it's something that we really need, especially now, if we can actually gather there.
Yeah, we were looking forward to that. What professional background and skills do you bring to this position of selected?
I've been a professional salesperson for a long time, I'll say, maybe 40 years or so. And I think that type of, you know, I know there's a lot of, looks like a lot of time going to be spent on fundraising, things like that. And I think I, the sales background kind of fits in with, with trying to raise money and going out and getting people interested, which is really what I do with my products that I sell now, so.
Great, great.
Hey, Andy, John.
John.
Yeah, how are you?
Great.
Good. What personal or professional constraints on your time or service might you anticipate if you were on the board?
Um, that's an interesting thing because I'm, I'm not as busy as I used to be. So I feel like I have some time to spend. Being in sales, you know, there's, there's some opportunities to do some things possibly during the day, but evenings are really, I, I don't have any children at home or things like that, so I'm really available to, to spend some time. And whatever's required of it.
Okay. If you think about the three primary roles of a trustee, advocate, ambassador, and asker, in which of these you think you might want to be most active? You already mentioned maybe fundraising, right?
Right, right. I'm always an advocate for, for the library, so.
Yeah.
But that's really where I, I lean toward because I just feel like, like I mentioned before, it's, you know, it's a great place for a community. And I think every community should have one, no matter what the size, but a great place for children to, to spend time and families as well, so.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
All right. Well, Andy, I'm Janie, and very nice to meet you. Thanks for joining us tonight. I was wondering if you've ever served on a not-for-pro, not-for-profit or any kind of local community or municipal boards?
I really haven't. And that's just, we've lived in, in Lake Bluff for about 10 years. And I, I really haven't up to this point. And so I'm, I'm really, you know, wanting to be more involved. And that's, that's, you know, my hope anyways. A library would be a good, a good place for me to do that.
Yeah, I, I agree. I'm wondering what library services you and your other members of your household take advantage of? If you've been here for 10 years, you've had an opportunity to get inside a few times.
I still like the hardcover books, so I usually, I like to hold the book and read it, but electronics services, but I listen to a lot of CDs and things like that. And it's, I wouldn't mind seeing that, that expand as well. Have a larger selection of CDs, but I know those are kind of going out, you know, going out of style or whatever, but I love those. But, you know, obviously, the electronic medium is gonna be huge moving forward. As it is now, it looks like during, during COVID, it's really picked up for the library. Usually hard books, hard, hardback books is what I usually get involved with.
Cal, did you have any questions for Andy?
Uh, yeah, Andy, would you be willing to act as an ambassador for the library in any of our community affairs? Like, could you walk on stilts down script?
I'm about 6'4". I don't think I'd have to, but.
Well, barring, barring that.
All, all those kinds of things. I'm certainly open to them. And, you know, I always talk about, you know, wanting to do things. My, my wife is on the board of the farmer's market, you know, and, and trying to get more involved myself, you know. So it's just willing to do whatever, whatever really is asked of me to promote the library.
And would you tell us what, what type of diversity would you provide if you were on the board?
Um, that's, I'm, I'm kind of a traditional type of person, but, I mean, you guys all seem like you're maybe from the same generation as me, if I can say that. But I just, I think a, a fresh, a fresh take on something would be good. It's, I'm coming from, you know, not really been involved in that many things and, you know, kind of a, kind of a fresh look at it. And I mean, I don't know how long everyone's been on the board, but, you know, it's just a kind of a, you're obviously looking for a couple of new people to come in. So it's, you know, but providing a fresh, some fresh ideas.
Well, I could tell you that I'm with you when it comes to like a hardbound, hardcovered book.
Let me, let me ask you one more question here. I'm just wondering what you think we're doing well and what you think we, we might be needing to expand upon when we get back open again?
Right. They certainly have done all they can during the last six months to try to, to make it available. And that hasn't, hasn't been easy, I know. But I think from, for me, they, no matter who you run into, they're, they're really helpful and they do that really well. I think there's just a lot of people that work there that are really friendly and want to help as much as they can. And so that, that's really the key. I, I'd like to see more choices, like I was mentioning, you know, about CDs and, and I know the e-reading is gonna be huge. I'm sure we'll have to increase that as well. Those things all take money, of course, but I'd, I'd read about the, the fundraising, you know, the expansion of the library, and obviously that requires money and, and it's gonna, that's gonna provide some more space to offer all those things.
Well, Andy, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Do you have any questions for us?
Um, mainly that I was thinking about, you know, what kind of time commitment there was, and I, I kind of got an idea about it, you know, it's.
Yeah, we need, the full board meets once a month. It's the third Tuesday, and usually at 7:00 PM. Until last March, we always met monthly in the spruce room, which is the lower level of the library. Obviously, we are virtual until further notice.
Sure.
And then committees as necessary. Some, actually, we haven't had, didn't have a lot of meetings at all this summer, but then they're starting up again. So as needed, but now hopefully your, your schedule would permit that.
One of the questions I had was about, about the fundraising effort. And I know there was, it was going to be now, but what were they actually, what was it really involved in that? What were you, how was the money gonna be, going out to the community? I know there's the Friends of Lake Bluff Library that go out and, and raise money, but was there gonna be an event, or was there going to be just an ongoing effort?
Well, I don't know how much time you have, Andy, but.
Assuming I would be involved in that.
We actually have a foundation now. John is involved with the foundation, Eric and myself and Kale. And then the Friends are a separate entity in Lake Bluff. They are enormously resourceful, valuable fundraisers, more for programming and accessories of the library, whereas the, the capital fund that we're, the rest of us are talking about would be building, building improvements or, and/or expansion. It's obviously just pretty much on hold right now. John is our resident fundraising expert. John, do you want to say a thing or two about it?
Sure. Yeah, it's, we have, we, you know, we've got several iterations of the, the size of the scope of the project. One of the challenges is we don't really have a real history of major gift fundraising at the library. The Friends is basically the fundraising vehicle, or has been the fundraising vehicle. So with any capital project, you really do need some major gifts. So we would need to tackle that and find some prospects that we'd be willing to commit to, to a major gift prospect, or to a major, major product, prob, you know, prospect, project.
Sure, I understand. Just wanted to look and see. That was really about it. I mean, it just, for me, I just like, like to get involved and I'm passionate about the library. So I just, you know, if you can really help out, obviously looking to fill a couple of spots. And this is kind of a temporary thing and be a good way to kind of fill each other out, I guess, you know, in the next six months until April, so.
Yeah.
Thanks, Eric. Anything else?
No, that'll cover it. Only thing I would add is a hearty thank you again for being here with us this evening. And that after the interviews this evening, trustees, as I might have mentioned earlier, will be discussing the applicants and will be then voting on who to select at the November 17th meeting of the library board.
Yeah, Andy, if I could ask one more quick question? That I should explain that the positions we're looking for are, are filling current vacancies. And it would be our hope that installing someone in November, that you would be available to run for election and then serve a full term, rather than just a short-term commitment. Is that something that interests you?
Oh, for sure. I, I mean, I'm, I'm really looking to retire and maybe the next year. And so I would have more time to be able to do that. So sure, definitely would be long-term.
Right, thank you. I'm sorry, Eric, I kind of jumped in there.
No, you're fine. All right, on that note, thank you again for, for joining us.
Thank you, everyone. I appreciate the time.
Stay well.
Bye.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Okay, notes, thoughts, questions? We've got our next candidate, Ms. Bonnie Scholl, in our waiting room.
We're actually right on schedule.
Yeah.
Amazing.
No, yeah, this, this is working out well, the, with the questions.
Good, good. It seems like it's flowing well. Okay, I will bring Bonnie in then.
Please.
Bonnie?
Hello.
Hello. I am Eric Bailey. I'm the library director. We've exchanged some emails and texts. So good to see you.
Likewise. Nice to see you.
And I will introduce you real quick to the five current members of the library trustees, who will be leading the interview to process tonight. As I go through, I'll also highlight the committees that each trustee is on. And I'll start out here with Kathy Meyerhoff, who is the president of the library board. And Kathy, in addition to being the president, is on the Building and Grounds Committee, as well as the Human Resources Committee.
Hi, Kathy.
How are you? Thanks for coming.
And next up, we have our intrepid vice president, Cal Stroh. Cal is also on the Building and Grounds Committee and the Intergovernmental Agreement Committee. And we have our amazing taker of notes, Janie Church, who is the secretary for the library board. Janie is also on the Building and Grounds Committee, as well as the Human Resources Committee. And then we have Bill Hayes, who is our treasurer. Bill's on the Finance and Long Range Planning Committees. And then we have John Heinselman. John is a trustee and he is on the Long Range Planning and Human Resources Committees. So very quickly, a little bit of information about the, about the committees and the, the process. And then we'll get started with some interview questions. The process is for going through the interviews tonight. The applicants will be interviewed. The board will have a chance to discuss. And then a final selection of two trustees, two new trustees from the applicants will be made at the November 17th regular board meeting. So I intend to be in touch with everybody before that meeting. And whether selected or not, I will be in touch with everyone. So you'll hear back from us. Regarding as far as time commitment, which will segue into Kathy's, some of Kathy's initial questions here, the trustees meet, the regular meetings are 12 times a year, once a month, the third Tuesday of the month. Those usually run somewhere in the neighborhood of one to two hours. Those usually run somewhere in the neighborhood of one to two hours. There are also committee meetings as needed. Depending on the committee, that can be anywhere from two to six meetings over the course of the year, a varying length. Some of the committees meet pretty frequently, others a lot more sporadically. So on that subject, I will hand things off to Kathy Meyerhoff to get the interview process going.
Bonnie, thanks so much for joining us tonight.
Sure, happy to, happy to be here. I, I've watched the videos of the last two board meetings. In some ways, some of you are kind of familiar, like Bill with the map and Jonathan with the, with the quilt behind him. I, I feel, you know, it's funny, we live now where people are invited into our homes, you know, this is my home. So yeah, I'm, I'm happy to be here. Thanks, Kathy.
Well, great. And just a couple of quick questions. What made you interested when you heard about this vacancy on the board of the library?
Yeah. So this, this is in some ways in my, my application. So I, I walk up to the library, I live a block away. I was there today returning some items since the drop boxes were open again, thankfully. And I, I saw, I, I saw a posting about the board and I think it also came through in a newsletter that I read. I do tend to read all the community newsletters. And I, I love the library, even from when I was a young child in elementary school. I used to help close our school, elementary school library one day a week. You know, when my children were little, I loved bringing them to the library for different events, even if the event was simply finding a new book that spoke to, you know, your children. And today I use it routinely as a resource to help plan travel, a book club that I started with some friends from high school. So I, I, I'm, I'm a regular patron of the library and I've just always had a strong affiliation for, for reading and community. That's what it is.
That's great. What professional and personal background and skills do you have that you would, you'd be bringing to a position of selective?
Right, right. So professionally, I have worked for over 20 years for ABV, previously Abbott. And, you know, I'm, I'm highly organized. I've been in sales leadership and marketing as well as country general management. I lived outside the US for five years in my career, went to the library in Dublin, Ireland, loved it. Adorable little library. Yeah, not far from Trinity College. So, you know, for me, it's really, I, I love to set goals and achieve them and work with a team to achieve them. I'm very reliable and, and I'm pretty good with numbers, forecasting, budgeting, all that good stuff.
Okay, that's great.
Helps, helps keep a board fulfilling its responsibilities and hopefully serving the community.
Great. I'm going to pass you on to John. I know he's got some good questions for you. Thanks a lot.
Hey Bonnie, what, you sort of, well, what personal or professional constraints on your time or service might you anticipate? That's probably a different question now than when we're out of this.
Right.
You know, whatever we're in here, but.
Oh, I, I actually see in my future, having more time, thankfully. I am finishing up a master's in public health degree. And I'm also kind of gearing down my career with, with ABV. My children are in college, so that's in part why I'm no longer a soccer mom or a volleyball mom or an ice hockey mom or, or, you know, room parent. Those are the things that kind of occupied my free time outside of my full-time work. And so now I'm looking forward to giving back to the community. And again, I see, I see having more time for those things in the near future.
Great. As you think about three primary roles of a trustee, advocate, ambassador, and asker, which of these do you think you would most, be most active in?
I'm sorry, can you tell me the third one again?
Ask her.
Ask her.
Fundraising.
Yeah, yeah. Um, I would, I would say advocate. I would say advocate. You know, I think it's important to understand what are the needs of the community and advocate for those. You know, certainly they've changed dramatically in the, in the days of COVID. You know, and I, I've seen the library innovate around that, you know, the, the pick 10 or the, you know, curbside pickup that has really, I think, helped keep the community engaged with the library. So I, I think, you know, the, these times call for probably all three types of roles for the trustees, but the advocacy one is the one that speaks to me most.
Okay, thanks. Yep.
Great. Well, I will ask you a few questions if you don't mind, Bonnie. First of all, I'm wondering if you've ever served on a nonprofit board or any kind of community, local community boards?
Yeah, I currently serve on a alumni association board for my undergraduate institution, Penn State. The Nittany Lions, we're well-known for our football, I guess. And my daughter actually attended undergrad there as well. So I serve on an alumni association board there and I'm part of the endowment committee there. And I've been on that board for about 18 months. Again, speaking to how my own non-work time has become more flexible for me to invest and give back in different ways. In terms of the, the community, I've lived in Lake Bluff for two years. I've moved six times with my employer in my career. Some of them overseas. So my community involvement's been primarily through, you know, the high school, as I said, teen parent or, you know, responsibilities like that.
Thank you. That's a pretty thorough answer. And you've also answered, I think, what my next question was, was what services of the library do you and your family take advantage of? I think we've got a pretty clear idea of that. So I will pass you on to Cal, but thank you for your time.
Thank you, of course.
Would you be willing to act as an ambassador for the library in any community events? For instance, the Fourth of July parade or our own Friends of the Library group?
Yeah, yeah, I certainly would. You know, I live on Scranton, so my house is on the parade route, one of the reasons we bought here. And, you know, I know that the Friends just sent out a letter, I think, looking for some fundraising. And I've seen, again, through the previous board meetings, that typically one of the library board members attends the Friends meetings. And yeah, I, I see it as a good way for me, you know, personally to connect with the community as well as, as a board member to, you know, be that advocate and listen to what the community says they need and want.
Thank you. And what type of diversity do you think that you could bring to the library board?
Um, interesting question. I, I think, you know, how, I think, I know, I grew up in New York. I've lived in different parts of the country, Pennsylvania, Ohio, et cetera. So I think just having experienced the library in different countries as well as states could be beneficial. I also, you know, I, I don't know the professional backgrounds of the rest of the team here, the rest of the trustees. But like I said, certainly, marketing, finance, I think more, more functional diversity potentially. Again, not knowing what others, others have as, as part of their skillset and experience.
Thank you. I'm going to turn it over to Bill.
Okay. Hi Bonnie. I've got a couple of questions here. How, how do you believe the library can improve the, the patron experience from both pre and, and our current situation?
Right. So, um, you know, I, I would say one thing, I walked up to the library, didn't know that the drop boxes were closed or the library was closed. I think my husband might have, might have mentioned it to me later when I said, oh, you know, that the libraries had to close again. You know, it was interesting because the first closure, I think, was in March. And I was in the library and I remarked to my husband when I got home, I can't believe how crowded the library was. Everyone stocking up on books and movies and things. But then the second time, somehow I missed the notification. So I, I don't know if maybe some community can, more, more types, different types of community communications might be helpful. I will also say, as someone who's, who's worked full-time and, and, you know, again, my, my children are in college now. So it wasn't too long ago that they were in high school. I would say maybe more programming in the evenings to bring in people who are working full-time during the day and maybe have other, other family commitments on the weekends.
Okay, and what do you see as the, the library strengths that, that we believe we, we could further cultivate?
Yeah. Um, you know, I, I think as a gathering place, it's, it's an amazing accessible service that serves the community, no matter what age you are, right? Children down to, I guess, you know, from two to 92, let's say. So I, I think that's a real strength. I, I also think that, you know, the variety of services offered, audiobooks, movies, the, the book clubs that are offered. You know, I, I think that the, the, the part of the strength of the library is the diversity of the demographic it serves as well as the diversity of, of services and programmings. You know, I think, I think there's, there's a knitting club. I usually see a trivia night posted else in the library as well. So I think it's a great, it's a great, I've, I've never been in village hall. But I'm in the library all the time and I think I'm fairly average for our community here in Lake Bluff.
So, well, I'm going to jump in real quick since we're getting close to our time limit. Bonnie, thank you for, again, for being here this evening. Do you have any questions for the trustees?
Um, I, I guess I, I would like to know what, what kind of balance are you looking to create on the board with these appointments? And then of course, there was the election in, in April. What, what, what are you looking for?
Well, that's a good question, Bonnie. We're, we're looking for someone who has been close.
A live body.
Someone who I just think would be comfortable in the library trustee community. And we're looking, we have a, we have a very strong board in terms of talent. So I don't think there's any, you know, lacking hole that we're trying to fill. But someone who would fit in well, who has things to offer the library, new ideas, enthusiasm and experiences that we feel would benefit everyone.
And, and maybe one, one other question. In terms of the elections in April, what, what to expect? I actually picked up the filing information. I'm looking at it here. It looks like it's just a 10, a 10 signature requirement. I'm just, I'm just curious, what is it like, what is it like to run for the library board? Of course, this is an appointment, but that, that would be sort of, you know, not, not too far in the distant future.
Yeah, I could answer that if you want. Kathy, it's, it's actually streamlined tremendously in the last couple of years with the new organization called Boat Lake Bluff. And so the only thing is that should you be selected, you'd have to be ready to jump in in December and appear before, well, virtually, before Boat Lake Bluff. And, but once you do that, Boat Lake Bluff really takes care of all the paperwork for you. So it's just a matter of the county rules require the filing to be done early enough that unfortunately that has to be done in December. Just, you know, one more thing for busy people to do in December, but it's not so bad.
Bonnie, they are going to do a drive-by November 20th and 21st where they'll allow, people will, will get your signature or petitions in there. And I, and I'm, and I'm going through the process for reelection in April as well. So I'm looking at the paperwork now and I think it's 25 signatures in total that you need to have.
Is that all it is?
That, that will be gathered for you.
Yeah.
But it's only 25?
I think it's only 25, Cal. On the paperwork I pulled up, that's what it had said. I thought it was going to be like 50, but.
Yeah, I thought it was 50, but you know, it's been four years since I went through that. So I don't know.
I believe it was 50 and they've been lowering it.
Oh, okay. Okay. All right. The other thing is very often you are running unopposed. So you don't have to be the politician to do this.
There, there's almost never been more candidates than positions. So it's, it's not something where we've ever, I think maybe once in all the years I've been at the library, have I seen a situation where somebody really ran as, you know, an actual, you know, get out the vote, I'm running for library board, vote for me.
Been kissing babies.
Actually, I think it was the same person twice. And no, no, pretty, pretty straightforward for the most part. Usually the biggest challenge that the library board has is making sure that there's enough candidates for the openings. So on that note, we are up to the end of our time. I do want to apologize about the abrupt closing last week. That was very unplanned. We learned midday that, you know, we had a staff member that had tested positive. And, you know, they'd been in recently, so we needed to shut things down and evaluate in a rush.
I think you did a good job.
Then convenience. No, no, no complaints.
Yeah, I'm, well, I, I feel bad. We are always trying to find the best possible ways to communicate with the, the community. So would love to talk with you more on that.
Thank you all for your time. I don't want to keep you or any of the other candidates waiting. I appreciate you taking my questions and look forward to hearing back from you, Eric, shortly.
Yeah, thanks Bonnie.
Thank you, Bonnie, and have a wonderful evening. Stay well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. How's everybody doing?
How many more candidates do we have? We have another three.
We need to, we're, we're pretty well caught up now. So if you want to use a minute to get a beverage.
Well, I guess I thought we had a break built into this, but we don't.
I, I had anticipated that they weren't going to flow into each other quite as much as they have done. But we're, we are clipping along and the interviews seem like they're going well.
Well, we should keep clipping along.
Get her done, Cal.
Get on with it.
Okay. On that note, then I'll invite Brett Warning in. Here we go. Good evening.
Evening.
Brett, and I'm sure I'm going to mispronounce your last name, Warning.
You're perfect, spot on.
Excellent. Aimed not to make it too complicated. So there we go.
Well, I always say, warning is in danger.
Excellent. Well, I'm Eric Baileyham, the library director. We've communicated by email. So good to see you face to face for 2020. I'll go through real quickly here at the, the start of the interview and introduce you to the trustees. And I'll list off, in addition to, you know, what role they hold on the board, what committees they serve on. And then I'll provide you just a smidgen of information as far as what the process for selecting candidates to fill the vacant trustee positions will look like going forward from the meeting tonight. So first to get us started, we have Kathy Meyerhoff, who is the president of the library board. Kathy serves on the Building and Grounds Committee as well as the Human Resources Committee. And next up, we have Cal Stroh, who is the vice president for the library board. Cal is on the Building and Grounds Committee as well as the Intergovernmental Agreement Committee. And then we have Janie Church, who is our excellent note taker at meetings. She's our. She's our secretary for the library board. And she is on the human resources as well as the building and grounds committee. And then we have Bill Hayes. Bill is our treasurer and Bill is also on the finance and the long range planning committee. And then last up, we have John Heinselman. John is on the long range planning committee as well as the human resources committee. So those are our, uh, current trustees. So a bit of information real quick about the, the rest of the process. The trustees this evening go, are planning to go through the interviews and then take a few minutes to discuss the applicants. And hopefully before November 17th, either at the end of this meeting or at another meeting, land on who they would like to offer the vacant positions to. And then formally select those candidates at the November 17th meeting of the regular board. I would be the one following up with the individual selected. I will also be the one that follows up with the individuals who are not selected. So either way, you get to hear from me.
Very good.
So that is a bit of information about the process. And on that note, I will hand things over to Kathy to get the interview going.
Right, Brett, thanks so much for joining us tonight.
Well, thank you for the invite, appreciate it.
Very happy to have you here. So what is it that was interesting about the library when you saw that there was this trustee vacancy?
Well, a couple of things, you know, I, first, I think it's an excellent facility. I've used it, haven't lived here a long time, but I, I moved here from Chicago in 2018. And I have, um, I've used quite a few of the resources and I think it's impressive. And my sister-in-law visited from Colorado, used it, was very impressed, especially for the size of the town. And, um, I have always wanted to be involved in the community somehow or other. For many years, I, I lived in Chicago for 29 years before I moved here, so it's a little harder. I was involved in some charity groups, but to, to actually be involved in the municipal governance in any capacity, of course, in Chicago is, is a bit difficult given the size. So this, uh, this is a nice opportunity and I, I love libraries. I have spent a large portion of my life in libraries, given my, um, my majors in college were history and geography. And I'm a lawyer by trade and I, I always enjoyed studying in the library. Always nice location to get away from all the distractions on campus. And I, I just all have always, always appreciated and enjoyed the resources of libraries. Just always a very good place to be.
What professional and personal talents do you bring to the board that you think would be useful?
Professional, I, I have worked with the state of Illinois and the federal government as a lawyer, as well as with several Chicago law firms and currently with the Chicago law firm. And so I, I have an idea of how government works. And I've, I've worked with some charity organizations and I, and nonprofits. I know how the financial end, you know, tends to work and how funds are limited and budgets are important. And personally, in addition to my interest, I am a hard worker and I always am well dedicated to anything that I undertake.
Great.
Hey Brett, John, I've got a, just a couple of questions. What personal or professional constraints on your time or service might you anticipate if you were on the board?
I don't really anticipate any. I, um, you know, I, I work full time, of course, as an attorney, which at times sure is a bit of a time commitment. But I don't have, I don't have any other large commitments, shall I say. I'm on a board, a nonprofit board, the Illinois Association of Environmental Professionals. But that's not a major time commitment. So, so I don't think I have anything that would, would restrain me in that regard.
Okay. If you think about the three primary roles of a trustee, advocate, ambassador and asker, which of these three do you think you'd be most active or comfortable?
I, I would definitely say advocate and ambassador. As I've gotten to know people in town, I, I, I tend to be someone who likes to meet people. And I, I have a dog and I walk him quite a bit. And maybe you've seen me around town, but it's, that, that's always a nice avenue to meet people. And, uh, you know, start up conversations and, you know, sometimes one thing leads to another and, you know, you get to be friends. So, uh, and, and being an advocate, that of course is what I do for a living. So I'm certainly familiar and comfortable with that.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks Brett, I'm going to jump in here. You've already answered one of my questions in that you did say you serve on a nonprofit board already. So you, you, you've had that experience. And you also said that you've always wanted to be involved in some sort of municipal government of some sort. And this is the, I, I can understand why that's difficult in Chicago and here is a great opportunity for you. I completely agree. What library services do you, uh, take advantage of now that you're here in town?
I'm, I'm sorry, didn't catch the last part now that.
Now that you're here in Lake Bluff.
Oh, oh, thank you.
What of our library services do you take advantage of?
I have used occasionally, I've used the computers, the printer, the scanner. I, when I worked from home, I was working from home pre-COVID-19, probably two or three days a week. And I do have a home printer, scanner, copier, but it's one of those basic ones that, you know, it's not, not nearly the, the type of quality that you have at the library, for example. It, uh, it only goes page by page, so I've used that. I have, uh, read some of the magazines, it's a nice little break to go there. I've been to several of the, the in-person programs, those are wonderful. I think that's, that's an incredible asset, especially in a community this size.
That's great. I'm always loving it when I hear people go to the programs. Cause I usually find out about them the next night and I'm on the board, so. Why didn't I go to that? Um, I guess the only other thing I, I would ask is do you go to any other libraries besides Lake Bluff Library in town? And how do ours compare to?
No, no, I, here I have not, no.
All right, thanks. I'll pass you on to, I guess, Cal.
Yes, yes. I'm an inveterate user of the library programs and I sort of miss them now, although we do have some on Zoom. So I appreciate what you said about attending the library programs. Would you feel comfortable being an ambassador for the library at community affairs, for instance, the Lake Bluff parade?
Oh, certainly, absolutely. You know, and one of the things maybe I should, I should have mentioned earlier is I, I had a friend who lived here for several years before I moved here. So I, I was familiar with Lake Bluff and that's what got me to move here. So I really do enjoy the, the town and the, uh, the community and folks, you know, folks that I've met. And I think a natural result of that is you kind of want to be an ambassador. And I, I think that, that certainly fits in with my personality.
Yes. And in a way, you've really already answered this next question. What type of diversity would you bring to the board?
As far as diversity, that, you know, that's probably a pretty good question. I, I don't know. You probably have everything. You all probably covered the things that I, I could bring, meaning, uh, you know, a, a good, what I think is a good work ethic and being the, an advocate and ambassador and, and, you know, knowing that fundraising is, is always a, a good thing too. And I, I just received the friends of the library mailing and I will be sending that back, back again. But, but yes, you know, I, I, I think that the, the key is, is probably, probably the, again, the ambassador, the advocate. Knowing that the, the funding, I'm assuming is, is a bit limited, you know, relying on, trying to solely rely on the, uh, the property taxes that, uh, I can imagine that, that has some, some difficulties at times and the need for outreach. And by the way, I should mention, you may hear a little background noise, my, my dog is here, so. And he, he's, he's a, about a 25 pound dog and he, um, he's not one of those couch potato type of dogs.
What kind of a dog is he?
He's a miniature Doberman mix. If anyone knows Chris, the, the former village president and I, her last name is. Her dog Turnip, my dog looks a lot like Turnip and people sometimes mistake my dog for Turnip. So that's, that's what my dog looks like.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, yes, no, and there he parked, so sorry.
Brett, how do you, how do you believe the library can improve the, the patron experience?
That, boy, that's a good question because, you know, first and foremost, I'll, I'll have to say that I think it's, it's a very good facility, very good resource. And as, as far as improving the experience, uh, that, that's, that's a very good question. I, I, I can't say that I have a golden answer to that. But, you know, that, that's always something to be thinking about and looking for, certainly. And, and, you know, if, if the, uh, the village were to grow at all, of course, you, you definitely would want to increase capacity. And, and probably, probably always want to look to where you can increase capacity.
Okay, um, and from, from your experience in the last couple of years, since you've moved to Lake, to Lake Bluff, what do you see the, the library strengths in, 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 in how you've used it over the last few years?
I think the community outreach is very good. I think that's a very good strength. And, uh, the, the variety of programs, I, I think is excellent. And I, I can think back to my hometown, which, um, I grew up in a far southwest suburb of Chicago. And when I was growing up, it was a similar size to Lake Bluff. And I just, they, and of course, this was a few years back, but they didn't have the variety of programs that, that this library has and, and I, you know, I, I think that's, that's phenomenal.
Good. Okay. Thank you.
No, thank you.
Excellent, so as we get to the end of our allotted time, very quickly, do you have any questions for the, the trustees?
Just, just a couple of quick ones. Wondering why there, there are two vacancies?
One trustee resigned. I believe it was chiefly time commitment that was the issue there and then one moved out of the community.
Ah, okay, I, I guess that last one. And then my other question would be, what is the interaction with the, the village trustees, the village president? Is there any, any formal official interaction? Is it, is it informal? I'm just a little, a little, we're, are wondering about that.
To try and very quickly summarize a relationship that has a lot of complication and nuance. The library is in the interest, interesting position that we are a component unit of the village. So, uh, the final approval of levy and budget and, and those things go through the village. But at the same time, uh, the library is set up as an independent unit within, uh, the village, which is interesting situation. So the library has its own board that sets its own levy and own budget. And, uh, you know, the, the village board makes a final approval on those, but they really don't have any authority to change them. So it is a setup that encourages a lot of communication and interaction. And I, I would say that overall, uh, one of our long-running goals is to really up that interaction and collaboration with, with the village.
Very good.
Uh, any other questions?
No, I think that's all I have.
All right, sounds good. On that note, thank you again for being here this evening. And I will be in touch.
Well, thank you. Thank each of you for your time. I really appreciate it and the opportunity to speak with you.
Thank you. Take care.
Have a good evening. Thank you. Thank you.
Now I am going to stretch and close a window, so.
Go for it, because our next candidate was, was here and now they're not here. So, um, must be having a, one of those always thrilling connection issues. Okay. Reed Wilson is our next candidate and he is ready. I'll wait a moment here so that everybody can get back situated.
Thanks.
Okay. Here we go. Mr. Wilson? Mr. Wilson? Can you hear me? Ah, can't hear you.
Okay.
You're a bit faint, but we can hear you.
I'll speak a little closer.
There we go. Good evening.
Evening, how are you?
Doing all right, doing okay. So, um, I am Eric Bailey, I'm the library director. We've communicated over email, so good to meet you in what, in 2020 is face to face.
Yeah, what we have, right? We have to work with.
Yes, indeed. So to get things started, I will real quick go through and introduce you to the five library trustees who are with us this evening. And then I'll give you a real quick rundown as to what the selection process is going to be after the interviews wrap up tonight.
Sounds good.
So our trustees, uh, first up, we have Kathy Meyerhoff. Kathy is the president of the board and is also on the, uh, human resources and building and grounds committee. And next up, we have Cal Stroh. Cal is the vice president. Cal is also on the building and grounds committee and on the intergovernmental agreement committee. Then we have Janie Church, who is our secretary. And Janie is on the HR committee and the building and grounds committee. Then we have Bill Hayes. Bill is the treasurer. And Bill is on the finance and long-range planning committee. And then we have John Heinselman. John is a, uh, library trustee and he is on the long-range planning, uh, as well as the, uh, sorry, brain, yeah, human resources committee. Brain fled me there at a mo, for a moment. So those are the trustees who are here with us this, this evening. Real quickly about the process. So, uh, th, this evening, uh, the trustees are doing, uh, quick interviews with. Real quickly about the process. So, this evening, the trustees are doing quick interviews with all of the applicants. As I had sent you, there are six folks who applied for the two vacancies. After the meeting tonight and potentially at some point before the next meeting in November, the trustees will decide who they would really like to offer those vacant positions to. And then I will let those folks know. I will also let the folks who were not selected know. So you'll be hearing from me either way.
Got it.
And then the final candidates will be voted on formally at the November 17th meeting of the library board. So that is the process. And on that note, I will hand things over to Kathy Meyerhoff to get our interview started.
Right.
Hello, Reed. Nice to see you. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Nothing else going on, right?
That's true. There are a few things going on these days. So tell me, what is it about vacancy at the library that caught your attention?
So, I've lived in Lake Bluff for, on and off, meaning, I was here for about 11 years. And then I left for about four years and then moved back. And so, A, I love, I mean, I really like the community here, for one. And, you know, having lived in some other communities on the North Shore, what really, it seems the most successful ones have a really, honestly, have a great library associated with them, for whatever reason. I mean, they've got, I mean, maybe they've got the funds to be able to take care of it. But I've always, I guess I'd say I always sort of appreciated being able to go into the library, read periodicals, check out movies, just whatever. I just, I think it's a wonderful, a community with a solid and, you know, a library that gets a lot of use is, in my mind, a community that is going to thrive, is a community that is going to, you know, is really work to educate their children here. I have two kids. They're all, both of them, well, one just graduated college, one is in college right now. And I think, I think it's really, it really is the heart of the community. And I would, I've always enjoyed, you know, working or going to a library that I feel as though, you know, it'd be something I would, you know, giving back to Lake Bluff, this is sort of the perfect fit for me in that regard.
What are your professional background skills that you think would benefit your position as a trustee here at the library?
So, I worked for, I worked as a, as a trust officer, trust and investment officer for JP Morgan in the personal trust area for 25 years. And I feel as though that experience has certainly given me a fair amount of understanding in terms of, you know, taking care of either the people who are, you know, beneficiaries of, you know, trust that are set up by relatives or also institutions that are charitable institutions that are beneficiaries of different types of trust documents, I feel as though I have, you know, basically, when you're, when you go through documents in that regard, you have to spend a tremendous amount of attention to detail. And you have to be a very good listener with the people who you're working with in order to, you know, really successfully create a rapport, create a trust within, between you and them. And also be able to carry out the duties of the trustee, even when they may not be, how do you say? It may be uncomfortable in some regards because the beneficiaries may not agree with, you know, ultimately, what is being said or what is being done. So, you know, just in a nutshell, in that, in that regard, you know, I feel those are some transferable skills that I'd be able to bring to the table.
Great, great.
Hey Reed, this is John. I've got a couple of questions. What personal or professional constraints on your time or service might you anticipate if you were on the board?
I don't, so I, I ended my tour with JP Morgan in July. And I had spent the last couple of months doing some house projects. So I'm not, I'm not currently employed at the moment. Um, I think there, honestly, there wouldn't be any, I don't have a whole lot of constraints right now.
Okay.
In shape for a triathlon, which.
Good for you. As you think about three primary roles of a trustee, advocate, ambassador, and/or asker, in which of these do you think you'd be most active?
So advocate, ambassador, or.
Asker.
Or asker, right. I would probably say, I mean, I was, I was in, I was in sales in a different part of my life in terms of an asker. I've done that. But I would, I would say I would be the most comfortable with probably being an ambassador to the library, obviously. And, you know, it's funny, because the event that the lib, well, I don't know if it was entirely the library, but the library was certainly part of it, that was put on about two summers ago, I think it was, where there was a band and you sold Apple tickets and that type of, that was, that was great. I thought, you know, why is this the first time I've ever, and maybe you've had other events similar to that, but, you know, it was outside. I mean, granted, it was a beautiful night and, you know, you did, the beer garden was right outside, and that was all set up. And you had a great band and everything. Like, you know, this is something that, you know, that would be, it's an easy ask at the end of the day. I mean, I don't know, you know, what the results were in terms of, you know, the expectations, but it seemed as though it was a great event.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Yep.
Hey, Reed, I do have a couple of questions for you, but I'm reading over what you wrote up. And it said, it said here that you don't have any prior work in the areas of either community organizations, say a nonprofit, or in any kind of public offices. So I'm just wondering what is, what is it that makes you want to jump into doing that now?
Well, I, you know, I guess you could say there's a first time for everything, right? And I have a lot more free time now. I, you know, I would, I would certainly like to see the library grow. And I don't know whether that's, you know, is it physical actually expansion of it or just, you know, more traffic in it. I feel as though, maybe, I don't know, I, having, having, and I look at, you know, for example, I lived in, I lived in Northfield for a short period of time, and they had a nice little library. But generally, everybody from Northfield could use Winnetka's library. And Winnetka had an outstanding library. And then they expanded it to make it even, I mean, even better and larger. And, you know, I just saw so many more people starting to use it. And I thought, wow, wouldn't it be great if Lake Bluff could do something, you know, similar to that? Now, I know a lot of people in Lake Bluff maybe use Lake Forest Library, which is obviously bigger and has more reading rooms and that type of thing. But it would be nice to, you know, if that were actually even an option or something in the future to think about. So, so back to your question in terms of why, what, you know, what prompts me to do it now? I guess I feel, you know, now that, you know, I've spent, I've certainly spent, you know, a fair amount of time in the corporate world and not having actually, you know, worked, you know, aside from being on the board to raise money for Children's Memorial Hospital, but actually never doing anything really for my community, I feel it's time. And, you know, I want to be able to give back, so.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Very much. Well, pass you on to Cal.
Oh, I guess. Would you be willing to act as an ambassador for the library at various community events? For instance, the Fourth of July Parade?
I mean, riding a float? Yeah, I would. That's not a problem, yeah.
Usually involves walking.
Even better.
And also, what type of diversity would you bring to the library board?
Well, based upon what I'm looking at, I assume this is the whole board. Not a whole lot, I guess you could say, just in terms of myself. But, you know, in terms of an outreach, that's a good question. I, I don't have an answer for you for that right now. So I guess that's something that would be, you know, I would, I want to discuss that, you know, once things move forward.
Sure. I'm going to turn this over to Bill.
Okay. Reed, I've got a couple of questions as well, and you talked a little bit about one of the answers here. But how do you believe the library can improve the patron experience?
Well, I mean, like I said, you know, the one thing about, you know, potentially expanding it would be nicer. I, I was, you know, I was thinking, now, I'm pretty, I know you already have, it was funny, I was, my wife was, and we had this at JP Morgan too, and my wife works in financial regulation. And she was, she was saying to me, she was saying, hey, I've got to, I have an opportunity to do a volunteer work. And basically, more and more, and JP Morgan is also doing this too. And more and more companies are, want their employees to take part in more volunteer work. So they are basically giving them a paid day to go off and wherever and volunteer for their community, you know, whether it's picking up garbage on the beach or all kinds of things. It's pretty, it's pretty broad in that regard. And I said, hey, why don't you go over to the library and volunteer to like read to the kid, read to kids for, you know, a couple of hours, you know, one day? And she looked at me, she's like, do they do that? Is that, you know, is that something the library does? And I said, you know what? I don't know. Let me, I mean, I know that, I know there are people who do that. But to be able to actually, you know, go back to people within the community and say, hey, you know, we actually offer this as a volunteer, or look, you can come over to the library and stack books for, you know, a day or something along those lines. I mean, I think that would be something you'd probably get some interest on, so.
Good. And then what, how do you see the library strengths and how do we cultivate them further?
Well, I really like all the librarians you've hired. They're so nice. And that's, actually, that is really important. I mean, that's the face, that's what people see when they come into the library. And, you know, that, you know, whether they're just chatting up the guys behind the counter regarding a movie they're thinking of seeing or, you know, book recommendation. Or, I, I think that is, that is definitely a strength of the library that you have right now. You know, I'll be honest, I haven't been down to the children's section lately, certainly with all my adult kids. So I, I know it expanded years and years and years ago. I think actually when they were kids. And so I think that, you know, in terms of, like I said, its strengths are, I mean, I'm pretty sure that the children's section is pretty well-developed now. You've got good employees and, you know, the interlibrary service is certainly easy enough to maneuver. And librarians are helpful enough to be able to order things and then, you know, have it ready for pickup. So in terms of finding books that aren't actually at the library, it's not that hard. That's not that hard of a process. So I think that is certainly a strength within the library with limited amount of books, so.
Great. No, thank you very much.
Okay. On that note, we've pretty much run through our time this evening. Before we bid you a good evening, Reed, do you have any questions for the trustees?
So basically, two of, two of the five of you are leaving? Is that it? Or the two that aren't?
Ordinarily, there's seven members.
Gotcha.
So we're down to five.
Got it, got it, understand. And typically, how long have you all been trustees to the library?
For me, 16 years.
Okay.
I've been on the board 10 years.
Yeah.
Yes, for me, it's like six.
I'm about a year and a half.
I mean, a year and a half as well.
Yeah.
And how often do you get together for meetings?
The meetings, sorry Kathy, the meetings are, the regular meetings are once a month on the third Tuesday of the month. They usually run, oh, anywhere from an hour to two hours, depending on the subject that's on the agenda. You know, as you probably gathered from the intro with everybody, all the trustees belong to different committees as well. Those meet generally as needed. Some committees, that is more meetings than others. Finance and buildings and ground meet pretty regular. You know, outreach and long-range planning, a lot more spotty. So, that's a bit about the time commitment as far as how frequently we meet. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
What would you say were some decisions, well, I mean, I'm sure, like, obviously, this year has been, there have been a fair amount of decisions. And like, in terms of like closing the, you know, closing the library, is that something the trustees are involved with making that decision? Or like during COVID, you know, when you had to close down and when you had to open up? And, yeah, curious about that.
Eric, if I can jump in, because, that's a great question, and I certainly have the same kind of question when I was new to the board. The board, the trustees are really here to advise and the, Eric in particular, and he then manages the staff. So one of our primary functions is to hire the director and work directly with him. We do his performance review and so forth. We manage, we, Eric oversees and we create and review the budget for each year. We'll be starting that probably next month. We just agreed on the levy for taxes for next year. So we're advisory. But really, the workings of the library, the decision-making is, those are Eric and his staff's decisions. And as you see there, that we have an outstanding staff. So example, when there was a brief closing, which we just concluded, Eric called me and said, this is what's happening. So example, when there was a brief closing, which we just concluded, Eric called me and said, this is what's happening. But certainly Eric made those decisions and then he immediately advised the rest of the board. So it's really great communication back and forth. And depending on the, the size of the project or needs is how much board involvement. Two years ago, we replaced the whole roof, which was a quarter million dollar job. So there was a tremendous amount, you know, Janie and Cal and I were on the building and grounds. We were outside with shingles and colors and materials and. This and that kind of stuff. So that was a huge project. Most, nothing else has ever come close to that. But it's, I, I think, I'm hoping, I hope that we're a great advisory capacity to Eric and to the staff.
And I should, I should mention also, Reed, I don't know if, stop me if we talked about this already, but since there are two openings. That we are seeking to fill now, those openings only are for terms that will end in April. So that means. That you would be, for you to be chosen, you would. Hopefully seek out election to the next four-year term. Which means that actually in December, you'd have to jump in to the Bolt Lake Bluff. Process to get your. To get your nominating papers in order and all of that. But Bolt Lake Bluff does the lion's share of the work there for that.
Yeah, that wouldn't be a problem.
Yes.
I don't have any other questions.
Excellent. Well. On that note, on behalf of everyone here, thank you so much for your interest in the vacant positions and for joining us this evening.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Take care. Okay. Our last candidate is ready.
Is it the last one?
It is the last one.
And then we're going to, we as trustees will be meeting to discuss this tonight.
Uh, yes, or. If, if it would be preferable, we could schedule a meeting on a different evening to, to follow up. It can be as much or as little conversation as, as is desired.
So Eric, we only had five candidates. Why did I think we had six?
We do have six. There's one more. There's one more.
Okay.
Okay, so here's number six. Matt, and whose last name I'm going to, I'm sure horribly mispronounce.
Yeah, it's.
Zoudi?
Hardly for that. You got it, Zoudi. Yeah. Like Ali with the Z. Yep.
Excellent. Okay. I'm, I'm for whatever reason doing okay with names tonight, so that'll never occur again.
Rather be lucky than good, right?
Yeah. Pretty much. Okay, well, I'm Eric Bailey. I'm the library director. Good to see you and what passes for face-to-face here in 2020. So to, to get started here, first, thank you for your interest in the vacant trustee positions. And for taking some time to meet with the library trustees this evening. I'm going to start the interview off by introducing you to everybody. And then giving you a short rundown as far as what the process for filling the vacancies going forward from tonight will be. Then I'll turn things over to Kathy to get us started. On the interview. And Kathy. Speaking of is our. Library Board President. Kathy is also on the Building and Grounds and HR Committees. Cal Stroh. Is our Vice President. And Cal is on the Building and Grounds Committee as well as the Intergovernmental Agreement Committee. And Janie Church is the Board Secretary. Janie is on the Building and Grounds as well as the. Human Resources Committee. And Bill Hayes, Bill is the Treasurer. Bill is on the Finance Committee as well as the Long Range Planning Committee. And John Heinselman, John is Library Trustee. And he is on the Human Resources Committee as well as the Long Range Planning Committee. So those are the trustees who are in attendance tonight ordinarily. The number of trustees on the board is seven, but we have the two vacancies. So at present, this is the. Full board. So. So as far as the, the process. The trustees are interviewing the six applicants this evening. And then later today and potentially at some point before the next board meeting, the trustees will. Discuss the interviews and the candidates, the different things that they would bring to the position. If brought on board. And then before the November seventh, seventeenth meeting, I'll be in touch with everybody. Notifying the, the two candidates that have been selected as well as the four that have not. So either way, you'll be hearing back from me before November the seventeenth. And then at that November seventeenth meeting, the board will formally vote on. Extending those vacant positions to particular applicants. So any questions about the, the process?
Nope, that's very clear. Thank you.
Sounds good. And Kathy, I will turn things over to you then to get us going on the interview.
All right, Matt, thank you so much for joining us this evening. And tell me what led you to be interested in this vacancy at the library?
Yeah, so I'm, I guess, I wouldn't call myself a bibliophile. I think that'd be too aggressive, but maybe a, a library aficionado. I, I, I work from home. I've had the pleasure of working from home for almost two years. So where the office has been more of an option than a requirement. And I, I choose to spend a lot of that time at libraries. So. Everywhere from, you know, McCamery County to Cook County, from Fountaindale to Warren Newport, I've, I've visited most, if not all of them. So the upside of that is it, it gives me perspective into how these libraries are, are engaging with their audiences, how they're making use of their physical space. What their environment is like, how welcoming that is and, and what resources they're, they're focused on, or at least, you know, inherently seem to be focused on. So that appeals to me and I, I'm a, lived in Lake Bluff for four years. And plan to live in Lake by sons in, in fifth grade. So we plan to be here for the foreseeable future. And I love the library as a public resource and a public asset. And would like to be involved more civically and locally in something that I'm passionate about. So when I read the. The, the opening that was available, I, I was, I was anxious to submit my application.
Well, thank you for doing that. Tell me what professional background and skills do you think that you would bring to the board?
Yeah, absolutely. So there's, my career has kind of spanned two industries. The first half in finance, mostly on the buy side in financial markets. Buying investment services, execution, research, what have you. And then more recently, over the past 12 years, in marketing and advertising. Which seems a little bit incongruous, with the exception that the focus for me has always been on the data and analytics background. So where I think that's relevant to the library in particular, and where I could be of good service, Kathy is. You know, demographic and economic trends are, are something that I am assiduously astute of. So I, I kind of keep my pulse on. What is top of mind for different sectors of society. And I'm active there locally and other things. So I think that gives me. A unique perspective on, on, on things locally coupled with my professional acumen. I'm also very good with, as a marketing professional with messaging and content and, and engaging with audiences. So. You know, I'd be anxious to bring some of those skill sets to the library and in service of the board.
Great, great. I'm going to ask John to pick it up there with some questions.
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions. First of all, what personal or professional constraints in your time or service might you anticipate if you were on the board?
Well, my understanding is there, there are regularly scheduled board meetings and those, those are announced, you know, sufficiently in advance. So, you know, I, I am, I am not the type of person who is very tolerant of. Absences and tardiness and things of that nature. My, my son will be the first to tell you that, somewhat to his chagrin. So I, I really don't anticipate, I know it's a blanket statement, but, you know, with sufficient notice, I uphold my obligations. And, you know, absolute calamity, I don't, I don't anticipate anything infringing upon my ability to serve.
Okay. If you think about three primary roles of a trustee, advocate, ambassador, and asker, in which of these do you think? You might want to be most active if you were on the board?
Yeah, that, that's a great question. I, I would, at first blush, I would have said ambassador. I, I really believe that libraries. In a lot of communities are an underutilized asset and given the breadth of technological advancement. Even having somewhat of a physical constraint like we do doesn't mean that we can't provide a first-rate service to our community. So. I would have initially said ambassador, however, in reading the materials that, that Eric sent across and. And looking through some of the materials on the website. You know, I think asker is something that I could also serve as a good role for and, and that I would be excited about participating in. I've always been involved in, in youth and community outreach, both philanthropically as well as, as, you know, youth sports related. So I'm not, I'm not adverse to, to making the ask. And I, I'm usually pretty good at. Putting the numbers together and, and, and bringing the marketing, you know, it's interesting, John, it's this little sidebar, but. You know, when I read the history of the library and it was a. What was the exact memorial for our veterans or something of that nature, World War I? You know, that to me immediately thought, gosh, if we're in the middle of a fundraising campaign, wouldn't there potentially be a great theme to capitalize on in terms of. Whatever the appropriate military ranks correlated to a level of giving and, and kind of having some fun with it that way and. You know, bringing both our history as well as our need front and center for our community.
Well, not everybody's comfortable asking, so that's, that's good.
Well, I, I was raised in a, you know, decent sized family. So if you didn't ask, you didn't, you know, you didn't get fed.
Oh, that's great. Well, I will jump in here, Matt, and ask you a couple of things. I, I'm looking at. Your work with community organizations and what really jumped out at me is Odyssey of the Mind. I think that. Is amazing. How did you get involved in that? And, and what do you do with Odyssey of the Mind?
With Odyssey of the Mind? Yeah. So are you familiar with the organization?
Yeah.
Yeah. So my, it was originally called, when I, I was a participant, gosh, dialing back the clock here. Fourth grade, so thirty, thirty-five, thirty-some years ago, thirty-plus years ago. And back then it was called Olympics of the Mind, and then the Olympic Committee sued them, and so they had to change their name to Odyssey of the Mind. But we've, my, my family has known the Miklises for almost four decades. And when my school wasn't able to. I guess a fine answer to find a coach, my mom stepped up and became a coach. And so she, to this day, actually still serves as an international problem captain. Her name is Carol Byros. And, you know, we've, we've been involved with Odyssey of the Mind for, for a long, long period of time. I really. That type of intellectual curiosity, which, which kind of dovetails with some of what we're talking about tonight.
Absolutely.
Is, 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 I think that's fascinating. And, you know, being, even before I was a father, watching that. That is light bulbs, so to speak, go off on young kids and especially in formats that aren't necessarily athletic. It is, is wonderful. And, you know, I see that in my own son, so.
That's really amazing. So. So have you ever done anything? That, that is a municipal government sort of local government volunteer work, like what you're looking to do here?
Yeah, I have not. This would be my, my first foray. My, my volunteer work has always either been through. Youth organizations primarily personal, personal interest, which is be another example. Or, or some, some tangent to, to my religious affiliation. So. You know, I, I have not served in municipal capacity like this before. I, I, that's part of what's appealing to me. It would be new and I'm sure I would learn a lot and hopefully bring maybe a fresh perspective or a different set of eyes on things. But. Yeah, that, that is, that would be new for me.
Okay, well, thank you. What, the other question I have for you is what? Of the services that the library currently offers, what do you and your family partake of?
So primarily circulation, physical circulation personally, as well as my son, we, we read virtually every night. And I, whereas I, I'm kind of a blue light phobia, phobe, if you will. So we, we tend to. Still use the old, the old print as opposed to any sort of e-reader. But I will use e-readers, especially when I travel. So I do use some digital, I mean, from Canopy to Hoopla to Overdrive. I, I know. I'm familiar with all of them. I know the benefits and, and some of the drawbacks. To each of those platforms. My son also participated in some of the civic programs. He's done the Lego programs and the. There was like a robotics program. I kind of get them confused because we do bounce back and forth between Lake Bluff and Lake Forest. And evaluate ourselves of the resources there.
Great, thank you.
My pleasure.
I think Cal has a couple of questions?
Yes. Would you be willing and comfortable to act as an ambassador? For the library and any community events, like for instance, the Fourth of July Parade?
I'm sorry, what, what was the example you gave, Cal?
Fourth of July Parade?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah. I mean, I, I, I do that currently. I, up until last year, because things have kind of. Fallen apart a little bit, given the COVID environment we're in. I served as the, as the cub master for PAC 42. So I was out there in, in left field at Artesian, holding our flag in the wind so that it wouldn't knock over on the flimsy stand we had. Because what possibly worse could happen for the Cub Scouts to drop the flag. An opening day. So yeah, I, I, I'm comfortable with any of those types of things. I, I do a lot of public speaking for my work. So I, I'm, you know, I'm not adverse to. Having the spotlight on me, although I do, I am nervous in those situations. Always have to make sure I'm prepared. That alleviates the, the nervousness.
You know, I, I can appreciate the nervousness because I'm a lecturer at church and I know what it means to, you know, have butterflies.
Yeah. But that can be invigorating too.
Yes, yes. It can scare you into being halfway good. What type of diversity do you think that you would bring to the board?
Well, I, I, from a diversity standpoint, I mean, just, just judging by the character of the folks here, I, I think I probably bring it maybe a slightly younger demographic. I mean, that in the, in the best way. I also would bring. A, a broad perspective from. The marketing and advertising industry. And I think that's really something from a messaging and a communication. And, and a value communication standpoint is where I'd be excited to help, to help bring some things to the library. I think we've got a great asset and, you know, encouraging or making it easier for people to access and use it. Through, you know, what mediums we have available to us, whether it's social media or our website, email, just word of mouth. Is, is something that I could help with.
Thank you. And I'm going to turn it over to Bill.
Hi, Matt. But one, one of my two questions here is how do you believe that the library can improve the, the patron experience?
You know, that's a great question, Bill. And in preparation for tonight, I, I tried to cue myself up a little bit. And anytime I. Engage with an organization, I try to read their, their, their mission statement and their values. And in reading through the mission statement, I think, you know, from, from a vibrancy standpoint, that's an area that. That I'd be excited to help kind of brainstorm with in terms of when people, and again, obviously we've got the. The History Museum to one side and we have our access to the other. But, you know, in, in walking into the library. Making that sort of more vibrant and stimulating of an experience would, would be an area that, that I would like to help with and that I have some ideas around. You know, I, I don't want to speak out of line, Bill, because I don't know what constraints we have from an ADA standpoint or. You know, other physical limitations that are imposed to us. Municipally or otherwise, but maybe, you know, exploring some ways to kind of reconfigure. Some of that format there, i- i- when you first walk in would be one in terms of the mission.
Okay. And, and what about, what, how do you see the, the library strengths and, and, and how you believe that we need to further cultivate them?
Yep. So from a strength standpoint, we have a wonderful staff. I mean, I, I think our staff is outstanding. I mean, I I think our staff is outstanding. Sadly, I haven't seen any of them in a long time, but I I would, I would venture that most of them would probably recognize me by face. So I we have a good staff there and a diverse staff. And I think helping maybe to bring some of their their voices and strengths out, you know, folks that like fiction versus, oh, gosh, I can't, Blake's mom that works downstairs, I can't think of Blake's mom's name right now, you have to forgive me.
Carrie, I think you're thinking of Carrie.
Yeah, Carrie obviously has a wonderful acumen when it comes to all things children related. So, you know, capitalizing on that asset, you know, we have a great staff in place. They're obviously very erudite and well-read. Can can they kind of become more of a voice and and help us to capitalize on the resources we have in place, whether it's physical or digital?
Great, thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Okay, I think that brings us to the end of the interview questions. Matt, do you have any questions for the trustees?
Yeah, you know, one of the things you emphasized to me, Eric, was, you know, the goal here is to find the right candidate. And if you could share with me a little bit in terms of what, who is the right candidate or what attributes he or she possesses, you know, maybe I can help add some color there if it's appropriate.
I can jump in and Kathy, you can give me course correction as as needed. You know, I I think in terms of what what the right candidate would look like to the board, you know, as a group of seven individuals, the board is together, the the final authority and the ultimate authority at the at the library. But that's something that, you know, the board is together. So, you know, I know that ability to work as part of a team to be able to discuss differences, you know, back and forth and, you know, to then still work to a a point where there's an agreement to move forward. You know, those are all definitely essential aspects. Because, you know, really the the team atmosphere on the the board, I think, is my sense. And Kathy, you can feel free to correct me on this, one of the most important because outside of the the trustee meetings, the the trustees are, you know, just, they're patrons. They're amazing patrons, you know, we love you guys. But, you know, the the board is a unit is is where that authority rests. Kathy, do you have anything to to add to that?
That's that's very well put. We, Matt, we work together to help the library be successful. We work directly with Eric regarding decision making and what we're about to start our budget for the for the next fiscal year, which is amazing. We just decided upon the last six weeks has been the decision making regarding the levy for next year, which is an interesting process. These are things, that type of thing you've probably never done before, but it's interesting to see how the whole village works with that. We have a, we have, we're an independent entity and yet we're very interdependent on the life, on the life, using the village. There are, because we're a small community in a small building, there are constraints. When you talk about the entrance to the library, if you were sitting in a committee meeting or a board meeting, having that conversation, there'd be like, well, we can't do this or we could do that, you know, there's just, it's not as easy as one walking in the door and saying, let's just change everything. So so that takes teamwork and and, you know, being good colleagues to one another. But I think it's a great board. It's it's been, I've been on the board for over 10 years. It's been a joy to to serve the community. I agree, our biggest asset is our staff. Eric and our staff are just outstanding. And they have always exceeded our expectations. But if we just look at the last six months and what we've accomplished and how we've expanded services and outreach, it's quite amazing. So it's a, it's a good group to be with. You're on your toes, creativity, you know, your professional skills are going to enhance whatever board you join. So, you know, we, that sort of thing excites us as well.
Thank you for that. That's very helpful. Yeah, and just to clarify, my my comment about the entryway was just more to demonstrate I was brainstorming and then.
I've been in a lot of conversations about the entryways.
Your concerns about that are are shared by many.
We've all gone round and round on that one.
Not an easy one to 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 address. We did, you know, there there were two daniels in the fish tank downstairs that my my son and I have a little aquarium hobby that we donated to that fish tank. But I was sad to hear that they had to, they had to take it down. I guess Steve at Fish Planet was maintaining that for a while or or helping with the team there to maintain it. Just another funny anecdote about my experience with the library.
Thank you for your support there and thanks for joining us tonight.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess, you know, that was, those really addressed the the questions I had. You know, the the providing materials and service, just going back to the mission statement, obviously providing materials and services. You know, that that's another area where I think I I could be value added in terms of kind of providing a perspective backed by data, if we needed it, to, you know, in terms of content materials, types of materials, areas of interest. You know, I think my vision for the future library notwithstanding is that there's, you know, some of these changes that we're encountering right now will be temporary and some will be systemic. And I think the ones, when it comes to home and community and methods of learning, will be systemic. And there are pros and cons to all of that. And, you know, as as a community asset and resource, it's, it would be our job to to bring out the benefits. So that that's how I would like to contribute.
Great, thank you, thank you.
Excellent. Well, thank you so much for for joining us this evening.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Say well. Okay. So the discussion portion here, which can be as long or as as short as preferred, I know that we've been in meeting for a while. I was figuring to start with it, just go quick around.
Does anyone want to take a two or three minute stretch break?
Two or three minute stretch break?
Yeah.
So Eric, is this part? Hi, Eric.
Hi.
Is this part being recorded? Are we still live to the public?
I mean, it's being recorded, isn't going out live.
Okay. All right, because I I would think this would be like an open, you know, the the closed session kind of thing, because it's like discussing personnel issues.